Call to order the February 7th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Yerha for our ceremonial opening. Ms. Yerha.
Thank you, Mayor. I invite you all to join in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Ah.
What?
You're gonna get into one of your history lessons.
I know.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
No history.
There's been a request to change the order of tonight's agenda. Our closed session will be held prior to our quasi judicial hearing. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to recognitions, reports, and presentations. And at this time, I'll recognize our manager, Mr. Steigl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I want to remind everyone that this is our only council meeting this month so that everyone can be free to celebrate Valentine's Day, that means you, Jack, with your loved ones next Thursday when normally be a council meeting. On Friday and Saturday, February 21st and 22nd, the council and department directors will go away for our annual retreat, which will be held this year in Asheville. Citizens can find details about all of our meetings on the town's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steigl. Now we'll move to Public Speaks Out. Our next agenda item, Public Speaks Out, has included instructions on the printed agenda. And if you'd like to speak at Public Speaks Out, I would ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the printed agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing, and that works to your benefit since you get more time. The three-minute time limit will be enforced. I will interrupt you once your three minutes has expired, not to be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer on the podium. It'll start off with a green light. When it starts, when it turns to a yellow light, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And at the end of three minutes, it will flash red, and that's when I'll interrupt you again, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair. To help have an efficient Public Speaks Out meeting, we ask that if you're here with a group, that you have a spokesperson on behalf of that group to reduce repetitive comments. Also, if you'd like to speak next behind the person that's currently speaking, I would ask that you stand behind the clerk in the stairway there and await your turn there. It also signals us that there are more speakers, and it helps since there's a one-hour time limit for Public Speaks Out. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud or make remarks from your seats or anything else that might distract from this meeting. So now is the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
I am Lynn Johnson. I live at 4224 Green Level West Road, Apex. I'm here again tonight in reference to 18 REZ 1 and 18A 1. Yes, I was just here at your last meeting. I spoke about two properties, 4224 and 4300 Green Level West. The approval now creates a traffic conundrum as well as making us isolated Wake County parcels surrounded by the towns of Cary and Apex. I appreciate that the town juggles many projects. Admittedly, it seems more relevant when it's your own backyard. Respectfully, my intention is to return your awareness to the still unresolved situation. Unfortunately, it seems the two homeowners are the only people talking about it. Silence has been the official response since the last meeting. Let's generate a solution by taking action. The facts remain the same. A major new road will dead-end at the property line. Additional traffic lanes will be added to Green Level except for the section in front of our properties. All of this will be a puzzling and enraging gap in your road network. Only two homes on a four-acre rectangle block your desired and planned transportation needs. So once again, I remind council, we, the homeowners, are interested in working out an equitable resolution. I invite each of you to be the catalyst that ensures your road plan becomes reality. We can work together. The opportunity exists right now to fulfill your commitment to providing services. Let this project be one of your many successes. Speak up. Ask questions of the staff. Empower them to reach a win-win. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Chris Hustle. My home is at 101 Glenmore Road in Cary. My plea tonight is inspired by rezoning case number 22, which I strongly oppose as an adjacent homeowner. The things I have to say are applicable to other situations where current homeowners are being crushed by big development. The good nature of our town is at stake. We moved to Connecticut in 1995, and we chose the town of Simsbury for safety and for great schools for our children. In 2002, we chose Cary for the same reasons. Ultimately, we bought our current home in 2005. If you don't know Simsbury, I hope you'll look it up. It mirrors Cary in many ways, such as being only a few miles from the state's capital. There's one distinct difference. Simsbury has not allowed unchecked growth. We went back to Simsbury this past fall for a visit. They still have the same grocery stores, not one new one. They still, the same dairy farm is still there, and they still sell the same ice cream you can't buy anywhere else, and you can enjoy it as the cows come in from the field. Other farms serve the community and schoolchildren, such as U-Pick Farms, Petting Zoo, and fresh corn. Is it because of market? No. I understand that private farms can't be forced to operate, but the town can influence the direction things go. In contrast, Harris Teeter used to be a couple blocks from my house. It's now vacated, and a new one a mile down the road. Simsbury is content with what they have. Cary is victim of more, 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 of biggering and biggering and biggering so that as developers come in and take over and make money, 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 all at the expense of the residents. Indeed, the heart and the soul of Cary is getting crushed. I predict 25 years from now, Simsbury will be the same. We'll go back for the foliage and enjoy the same ice cream at Tom Meadow Farm. But in Cary, we've already lost the charm of the corn maze. Everything about its history is excavated, memories crushed. If unchecked growth continues, more of Cary's famous charm will be lost. My street will be a dumping ground for trash accumulated by passers going by and the lack of new residents to care. That refuse only symbolizes how our disposable society has discovered how to make disposable office and business buildings where there is already an abundance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Going to close Public Speaks Out, and I'll do something unusual. I'm going to invite Mr. Hustle to email me. I would like to have a conversation with you, especially about our authority. We can't stop growth. We have no authority to do that. Every property owner has a right to develop their property, and I would like to talk with you about that. So if you would email me. You can contact the town clerk if you don't have the contact information, but it's on the website. Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda portion of tonight's meeting. This is item four. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all consent agenda items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes, we have National Wildlife Federation Mayor's Monarch Pledge, we have calling for a public hearing on 19801 Austin Development Partners, LLC annexation, we have conveyance of easements on town-owned property for the benefit of overture residential development, we have interlocal agreement for water intake services, and we have body, worn, and in-car camera system purchase. Councilmembers like any of these items pulled for discussion. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we now move to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes for their comments. And our first public hearing is the extension of 2012 bond orders, and our chief financial officer, Karen Mills, will present this item, and council may take action. Ms. Mills.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Tonight, we're asking you to take legal steps to maximize our flexibility in the use of debt authority provided by our citizens in the 2012 referendum. Voters approved $80 million of community investment bonds in November 2012 to finance fire, parks, and transportation projects. These projects that were promised to the voters are either complete or well underway. $16 million of that general obligation bond authority has not yet been borrowed, and of that $16 million, $7 million of voter authority is still available to appropriate for additional investment in our community. We're working now to make recommendations to you on how to use that remaining capacity. The voter authority, known as bond orders, expires in November of 2019, but can be extended for an additional three years. By taking this recommended action tonight on the extension, we'll maximize our flexibility in both time and financial resources to fund additional capital investments and infrastructure maintenance. The legal process includes a public hearing, and then, for the record, the title of each bond order will need to be read aloud and considered separately. With your approval, our next steps would include a public notice of this action, and then with further council action, we would ask for your consideration for the use of the remaining $7 million and ultimately a bond sale. So given that, now is the time for that public hearing, and of course, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. Now's the time for the public hearing for our 2012 bond order extension, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments or motions, and this will take three separate motions.
Well, first off, I'd like to thank Karen and the entire financial organization. You guys always do such a stellar work and to keep us on track and to ensure that we are ahead of the curve rather than doing this like in October, right before it would expire in November, is great that you're keeping an eye on it. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we move to approve the order authorizing the extension of the bond order authorizing 6.450K in fire station bonds of the town of Cary, North Carolina.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I would just, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I would just echo Ms. Bush's comments to you and your staff for just a job well done and just staying on top of things and making all of us look good. It never ceases to amaze me how we can talk about multimillion-dollar bonds or budgets or whatever, and hardly anybody ever shows up. And it's just a testament to you and your staff and the trust that you have earned throughout the community, so thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
I'll comment too. I thought that how many communities or towns would have leftover, unborrowed, unutilized money after this many years, rather than seeing the idea that we've got money, let's just spend it, but we've been waiting for the right thing? So I think it's to be commended.
Anybody else? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Ms. Bush.
Also move to approve the order authorizing the extension of the bond order authorizing $15,870,000 in parks and recreational facility bond of the town of Cary, North Carolina.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And the final one. I move to approve the order authorizing the extension of a bond order authorizing $57,680,000 of transportation bonds of the town of Cary, North Carolina.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Mills.
Thank you very much, council.
We now move to our second public hearing, 18A 19 WT Lowman Properties LLC annexation. Planning manager Wayne Nicholas will introduce the item, and council may take action. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This request is for annexation of 0.91 acres of property that's contiguous to the existing corporate limits located at 10116 Penny Road, approximately 1,000 feet east of the intersection with Lock Highlands Drive. Property is within Cary's ETJ and is currently zoned residential 40. Request is not associated with a proposed development plan or rezoning. Property is currently vacant, and the owner is wishing to connect the site to U-Town Utilities to develop a detached dwelling on the lot.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for the public hearing for 18A 19 WT Lowman Properties LLC annexation, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or motion.
Make a motion to approve annexation 18A 19?
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. We now move to our last public hearing, 18REZ 27 Weston PDD ONI 1C Amendment. Assistant Planning Director Deborah Granham will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning tonight, but instead, it's going to be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and their recommendation, and it will return to council in a few months for action. Ms. Granham.
Thank you. Good evening. For your consideration is a request to rezone approximately 5.32 acres located at 3,001 Weston Parkway. This is a portion of the Weston Plan Development District, so this amendment would only apply to this parcel. The subject property is highlighted here in yellow on the south side of Weston Parkway, and it's located to the north of the Wessex subdivision and just about a half a mile from Harrison Avenue. The subject property is developed with a 52,700 square foot building. It's the former site of the Kimley Horn Office Building, and as you may recall, it was briefly the site of Hopewell Academy. There was another school proposed there at one time, and that never came to fruition. Now, what's proposed is an office use. The applicant, Red Storm, has proposed to purchase this building and relocate from another property in Weston to this site. If you're not familiar with the building, that's because this is what it looks like in the summer. It's very difficult to see this from Weston Parkway. Again, this is when all the trees are in full bloom. According to the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Master Plan, there is a streetside trail proposed along Weston Parkway with a 10-foot width. The Weston Parkway is a four-lane median-divided thoroughfare, and it has been built to its ultimate cross-section, and there is a future Go Cary Transit Route along Weston Parkway. The site is not impacted by any stream buffers according to our GIS maps, and field determination of such features will be required at the time of development plan review. Cary's Growth Framework Map identifies this property as Employment Mixed-Use Campus, and an office use is an appropriate use within that district. The property is zoned PDD major, and it offers a number of options, including office, retail, churches, schools, clinics, post offices, et cetera. As I mentioned, we do have an applicant that is proposing an office use, Red Storm, and they are also asking for the following amendments to the PDD: to reduce a portion of the streetscape along Weston Parkway from 50 feet to 30 feet; to reduce the side buffer along the western property line from 10 feet, I'm sorry, from 25 feet to 10 feet. This is to allow an increase of 57 additional parking spaces. They've also proposed to supplement the rear buffer that's adjacent to the Wessex subdivision to meet a Type A standard. The reason for offering this is because the old PDD document that was approved back in 1985 just called out a buffer. It didn't say what the planting standards needed to be. So this is the applicant's way of saying that they will enhance that buffer to meet our current ordinance standards. They've also offered to construct the streetside trail along Weston Parkway and offered a condition that proposes no increase to the building size or the height. So this illustration provided by the applicant helps depict the buffer areas. Portion of the streetscape buffer would remain as is with 50 feet. This shows you the area where they're proposing a reduction of the width of the buffer from 50 to 30 feet, and then again from 25 to 10, with no reduction proposed along the southern property line and no reduction proposed along the eastern property line. Also like to point out, this area shows where there is an existing utility easement, a waterline easement across the subject property, which you cannot plant in, and then it shows you where the future parking is proposed in this area. So this again helps to illustrate the utility easement, which is adjacent to where they're proposing a 30-foot streetscape. This is a photograph taken of the existing sidewalk, which is adjacent to Weston Parkway, so we already have a five-foot asphalt trail in there. There's a slightly wider utility area than we see in a lot of developments, so the sidewalk's not right up next to the curb, but there's some space. There's also a little bit of opportunity for meandering. So exactly how that streetside trail is going to be placed is going to be something we'll look at at the time of development plan review. They can put it in a streetscape. Some tree impacts are going to be required, but we're going to look to make sure that it's as minimum as possible so that there's some meandering to avoid trees whenever possible. And this is a view on the other side of that streetscape. So this is in between the streetscape and the travel lane in front of the building. And the reason for this photograph is it helps illustrate where that proposed parking expansion area is, and again, reiterating that there's a utility easement. So there's not to be any trees planted in that area anyway, but you could put a drive aisle, you could put parking in that area. Those would be permitted across a utility easement. So again, this just helps to illustrate where the reductions are proposed, where the parking expansion is proposed. Property owners within 800 feet were notified of the proposed rezoning. The property was posted. Again, this photograph helps to illustrate just how wide the area is between the back of curb and the existing asphalt sidewalk. That helps identify that there is room to expand that streetside trail with as minimum impact to the buffer as possible. There was a neighborhood meeting held here at Town Hall on December 11th. There were four nearby property owners in attendance. There were concerns and questions about the increased traffic as a result of this business moving in, questions about the hours of operations, the noise and light impacts, and gaps in the existing rear buffer. And since the neighborhood meeting, we've also had three emails from adjacent property owners expressing similar concerns to those that were expressed at the neighborhood meeting. This is a 1998 development plan back when Kimley Horn was in the office building, and what we realized after the neighborhood meeting and our development compliance staff pulled this up and went out and looked at the site, there was a lot of vegetation that was initially installed in here, wax myrtles. This is what they would look like in full sun. You don't have a lot of sun back here because you have a lot of mature trees in the buffer, but with that, you also get some gaps. We brought this to the applicant's attention, let them know that there were gaps in the planting. We went out to the site and saw that there's opportunities to enhance this buffer, and so we presented that to the applicant, and they responded with the zoning condition to make sure that they bring that buffer up to a Type A standard. And this is an aerial view of that same buffer area. So again, there's a few opportunities. It's always a challenge when you have mature vegetation and trees to get those shrubs to really thrive, but they do have some opportunities to supplement that and help create some better visual breaks between their property and the close property owners in Wessex. So staff's done a preliminary analysis and seen that this request does support the work chapter and that it would support new or expanding firms. The higher intensity is encouraged in an employment mixed-use campus, and our initial observation is that by offering this increased buffer and these supplemental plantings and looking at expanding the parking area in an area where there's already no trees, that's going to reduce the impact that this request has on the buffer requirements. This concludes staff's presentation. The staff will be available for your questions following the public hearing and after the applicant's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granham. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
My name is Jamie Loack with Hager Smith Design. I want to thank you for your time tonight, and I also want to thank staff for helping us, guide us through the PDD amendment process. It's been, they've been great to work with. I'm here this evening representing Red Storm Entertainment. They are a Cary-based video game developer that are currently leasing space in Center Green in Weston, just about a mile down the street from the subject property. They recently purchased a vacant building at 3,001 Weston and plan to renovate the entire interior of the building and move the entire, all their employees into it. They also need an additional parking onsite to accommodate existing and future growth needs. We are tonight requesting the following amendments: reduce a portion of the existing 50-foot streetscape buffer to a 30-foot undisturbed streetscape buffer; reduction of the perimeter buffer along the western property line from the current 25-foot requirement of the Weston PDD to 10-foot. And then we're also asking for an allowance in the increase in parking over the maximum permitted by the code. Request number one, the reduction in the streetscape buffer. The 50-foot streetscape buffer, submitted some exhibits to kind of illustrate what we plan to do here, and Deborah did a great job of explaining that on the first 30 feet of the 50-foot buffer is heavily vegetated currently. The second 20 feet is pretty much lawn area due to the utility easement. Our plan is to basically preserve an undisturbed 30-foot streetscape buffer. The existing parking lot is also lower than the street in this area. It remains so, which will also obstruct view of vehicles parked in front of the building. Again, we're only requesting a portion of the streetscape to be reduced. We're not requesting the entire piece. The eastern, east side of the eastern drive aisle will remain a 50-foot streetscape buffer, and topography issues, we're, you know, there's not a lot you can do there, and we didn't want to disturb any more than we had to. We're requesting to meet the current town of Cary 30-foot streetscape requirement along thoroughfares along this stretch, this frontage. Red Storm has also volunteered to provide supplemental plantings, as Deborah explained, and they're also volunteering to provide a multi-use greenway trail along the frontage. The reduction along the 25-foot western property line, again, it calls for a 25-foot buffer. We're asking for a 10-foot buffer. This area is made up of a partial driveway extension and an existing driveway access that goes the length of the property. The Red Storm has also, based on existing conditions in regards to topography... The Red Storm has also, based on existing conditions in regards to topography, the existing dense forest canopy, the fact that the existing adjacent building is 100 feet away, 150 feet away from the property line, that will be mitigating any adverse impacts for any parking that we'd be having along that side. So it's going to be heavily buffered. The parking lot expansion will be developed under the current development standards outlined in Town Cary LDO to address concerns raised at the neighborhood meeting by the adjacent homeowner. Red Storm is volunteering also as a condition to be amended to supplement the existing 50-foot buffer on the Southern Property Line to a Type A buffer. And then the increase in parking request. The site's currently developed with 52,000 square foot being surrounding by parking. It was developed initially in 89 and has had two additional expansions. As the vacant building is being renovated, Red Storm has a need for this additional parking. Red Storm charged us to look at multiple schemes, which included a parking deck, which included compact spaces. But based on the development regulations, topography issues, the best way was to look at these two buffer areas for the least impact on the site. The request is for a maximum of 260 spaces, which is an additional 57 spaces. The project will still meet the maximum 70% impervious percentage allowed in the Weston And all the, the development standards and existing topography and the two buffer areas are requested for reductions. To respond to the justification statement that we provided, for number one, the proposed rezoning corrects an error and meets the challenge of some changing condition or trend, this request proposes to amend conditions of the existing PDD and continue the support of the existing use. Due to original construction phasing, site constraints, waterline easement, and an accident easement, there are a number of inefficiencies in the existing parking lot layout. Also, the current trend of creative open space and collaborative work areas in the office workplace now requires less, less space per employee, which allows you to have more employees, which requires more park. Number two, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This request does not constitute a change of use. The site is within the Employment Mixed-Use District. The last document was in Engineering Office. Office is in allowable use. Number three, the town and other service providers will, will be able to provide sufficient public safety, educational, recreational, transportation, and utility facilities and services. This is an existing building that currently has access to all of Town of Cary services and other service providers. These improvements will not require an upgrade of any additional services. A multi-use trail will be provided to replace the existing five-foot walk. Number four, the proposed rezoning is unlikely to have significant adverse impacts to the natural environment. This request will not disturb the existing mature 30-foot streetscape buffer along Weston Parkway. The exhibits kind of exhibit, show you that the tree canopy is pretty much going to remain the same. A landscape plan will be provided to add supplemental landscape along the Western Property Line and in the Weston Parkway streetscape to provide adequate buffering. Stormwater measures will be taken to meet Town of Cary NCDQ stormwater requirements to mitigate additional impervious surface. The proposed rezoning will not have an impact, adverse impacts on the property in the vicinity. There is no change in the existing use or expansion of the existing building. The project preserves almost all of the existing mature, mature vegetated buffers. Additional landscape will be planted to supplement the existing buffers that are being reduced. Additional parking will meet the Town of Cary development standards, including but not limited to lighting standards and stormwater. The proposed, number six, the proposed zoning classification is suitable for the subject property. Current zoning classification is PDD, and this request does not propose a change. Justification statement number two, rezoning, and responding to the Cary community plan. The property is identified, located on the Growth Framework Map as Employment Mixed-Use. The requests to amend the Weston PDD are consistent with Cary community plan as presented below. Chapter three, Work Policy Two, enhance locational appeal to businesses and workers. The applicant's business currently leases space in the Weston PDD. They're located, their business into the existing vacant building on Weston due to its desirability and location. The sites' proximity to existing residential retail centers make it attractive to compete for and retain employees. Chapter three, Work Policy Three, retain and grow existing Cary business. Again, this is a Cary-based business. And by redeveloping this underutilized property and building, the applicant's request will allow them the opportunity to grow their existing business in Cary. Chapter three, Work Policy Five, attract new high businesses, high-value businesses. The applicant is a vibrant, successful technology company that focuses on video game development. The position at, the positions at technology companies are known to have higher-than-average wages and salaries than other businesses, and this will continue to support the town's fiscal base. Chapter five, Engage Policy Two, provide Cary citizens with a highly functional, safe, well-maintained greenway. By providing multi-use greenway trail along Weston, the project will support the future greenway planned along Weston Parkway noted on the Planned Bike and Pedestrian Routes Map, identified in Town of Cary Community Plan. In closing, Red Storm is offering the following conditions. Provide a 10-foot multi-use greenway trail. Provide supplemental landscaping in the 30-foot streetscape buffer to meet Type B buffer standard. Provide supplemental landscaping in the 10-foot Western Property Buffer to meet a Type B Not exceeding 260 surface parking spaces. And for the residential neighborhood in the Southern Property Line, we will buffer, the buffer will remain a 50-foot buffer, and we will supplement landscaping to meet a Type A buffer standard. And number six, there will be no increase to the square footage of the existing building size. We thank you for your time tonight, and the folks at Red Storm are very excited about the opportunity of growing deeper roots in Cary community with the purchase of the building. And I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So now's the time for public hearing, 18 RZ 27 Weston PDDO and I want to see amendment. And I would invite our first speaker forward.
My name is Rebecca Edwards, and my husband and I live in the home immediately adjoining the rear of this building. And I wanted to say that since the December meeting, I was very happy to hear some of the things that Deborah shared with you, which we had not been made aware of in the additional notice about the meeting tonight, primarily addressing some of the concerns that we as the Wessex residents, who have also been there a significant amount of time. I know this building's been there a long time, but we've lived there for 19 years. I was actually wondering if it would be helpful to, can I use one of the photos that you flashed up here? Is that easy to do? I would really like to point out to you how close we're talking. Is that possible? This one right, it was towards the end.
That's the next, that's the next presentation.
Oh.
We can go into the December meeting.
Page 35 is the one.
How's that? Does that work?
Sure. Perfect. That's actually a great.
That's our house.
Yeah, that's our home. If you look to the left side of that photograph in the top, there are existing trees in that buffer on the left side that will be cut down. I looked at it the other day. There are mature trees that have been there probably decades and will be cut down. There are also trees that are inside of the parking lot that will be impacted and destroyed. We do have four primary concerns. The light pollution, noise pollution, the buffer reduction, particularly as it deals with backing up to the Wessex neighborhood, and the traffic and the queue that I'm concerned about for the egress of not only this building that's, already has 203 parking spaces, but the commercial building just to the side of it also uses the egress as the only way to turn left onto Weston Parkway. So there's a queue buildup at work, in working hours of people that are waiting from both businesses to turn out. That happens to be right in front of my kitchen window. So in months where there's, you know, times a day when it's dark and there's a lot of light, it's flashing in to our dinner table. It's very exciting. The 25-to-10-foot buffer on the side there will mean, like I said, that mature tree loss, but they showed you a picture of the buffer that's fairly non-existent between our home and this parking lot, and they showed you a good one because it's actually more significant than it looks. I'm happy to hear that we've been bumped to a Class A buffer. I appreciate, after the emails that we sent today, that we're going to have some more decision-making to look at this. Thank you for that. I know Red Storm is a Cary business. We're lawyers, we're SaaS directors, we're engineers, we're doctors, we are Cary residents also. So we want to share this space. We're not opposed. I mean, we moved there, we knew it was there, but I think the presumption should be that we continue to maintain what's been in place rather than encouraging a business to purchase a building and then afterwards look to make decisions to expand their parking. They need to have been looking at that before they bought that building, in my opinion. And so we are concerned particularly that there was an issue with cost and topographical barriers, which we were told apparently would be the option of putting those extra parking spaces on the other side of their lot. The other side of their lot, if you can see from one of the maps that they showed you, there's a huge, much larger empty space that's part of the, can you see it in one of these? Anyways, the point is it would much less impact the Wessex neighborhood and residences if it was moved to the other side, simply by doing that, moving the parking spaces to the other side. So we want that to be looked at and considered that, if possible. Is that, yeah, that doesn't show it very well.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Steve Reed. I'm the Managing Director for Red Storm Entertainment. I won't go over the details too much, I'll just reiterate. We were born here in Cary, as far as the business, 22 years. The chance to switch from a renter to an owner is an amazing chance for us to firmly establish what people most feel in technology companies is that you're fragile. And so by being an owner, you represent a safe haven so people can not only join you but come to the area and live close by an established company that owns the building. So that makes a fairly strong shift for our type of industry to make it a good employer. So we want to just acknowledge that there is a benefit to us by owning, and it's the place that we choose to own. We've been a Weston resident for 10 years doing a lease, and so when we had the opportunity to choose, we chose the place closest to us. And as they say, find the worst building and make it the best you can. So we took a site that was really in somewhat disrepair, and we're turning it into something that we can use. We're not outward-facing, we're not really looking to make a showpiece for the world to drive by and see a fancy building. We're keeping the, the front scape the way it is, and that's because we just want to, you know, do our thing. The noisiest thing we do is tap on keyboards. So hopefully we'd be a good neighbor, and that's why we listened during the last meeting, and we changed our plans to try to accommodate, and we'll do the best we can with what we're able to do. And I'll stay around to even answer questions the same as the rest. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? Anyone at all? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to my colleagues for questions or comments.
I have a couple of questions about, there were some questions brought up about lighting. Do we have any information, is lighting going to change in order to?
If they have any adjustments with their parking areas and there's any parking changes, it would still have to meet the same standards with cutoff fixtures and, and certain levels, limits at the property line, so.
So there, are there any, that would be a site plan issue, the lighting, but there are no conditions being offered for reducing the height of lighting or?
There's not at this time. We can certainly bring that to the applicant's attention as something they can think about.
Right. Some of, as this goes through the, through the process, there might be some opportunities to make it more palatable for the neighbors. I can certainly understand that.
Can I do a follow-up on that?
Yeah.
So if their lighting doesn't meet today's code, will they have to change the lighting to meet?
It, to the best of my knowledge, it does meet today's code, but we will investigate that and if they're doing any changes with the parking lot and the lighting fixtures. But those, those standards have been in place for a long time with the light levels not, you know, you're going to, there are some gaps in the trees. When you've got a two- or three-story office building adjacent to residential and the light poles in the parking lot, you're going to have some light that comes through the trees, which is why we don't call it an opaque buffer anymore.
Anymore. Right.
Continue.
Okay, I had another one. Go ahead. Well, the other one, it, the impervious surface that will be added where the easement currently is, do we have an idea of how much is going to be less? How many parking spaces are across the front and how many are across the side?
That'd be something the applicant, I'm sure, would be able to speak to.
Okay, because I'm.
I don't, we don't have a site plan yet.
Okay. So this is just mostly for the modifications, and then they'll determine how many are actually available, or did?
Yeah, they, they know they need an additional 57 spaces, but exactly how they're going to be placed on the property, that will have to go through development plan review so that we can look at that, make sure that they meet our dimensional standards and our standard specifications and details. Make sure the drive aisle is adequate, et cetera.
Right.
Does that trigger anything different in regards to stormwater runoff, BMP installations, or anything of that nature?
All of those things will be addressed and looked at as part of the development plan.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
I was just curious, when they add spaces, then they, if there's additional lighting required, that's all part of the code and goes through?
Yeah, we'll look at that all as part of the development plan. We'll make sure that they've got the parking lot and the lighting meeting our current standards. And plantings and, you know, the number of tree islands that are needed if they're adding parking spaces, they're going to have to meet the current standard of having a tree island for every 14 spaces. They're going to have to make sure that they have the vehicular screening around the parking areas as well. So there is an opportunity to enhance the landscaping with this.
Other questions, comments?
I have a quick, oh, sorry, I have a quick question. The material for the streetscape, streetside trail, is that concrete or?
I believe that is asphalt. I'm looking over to.
Current is asphalt. I was just wondering if it was going to change because in some places we have those multi-use paths, we have concrete, but I noticed that you guys were calling it a, a streetside trail.
It is a streetside trail.
I didn't know if that denoted that then it would be asphalt instead of concrete.
Yeah. If, if we don't have the answer tonight, we'll get that information for you.
I was just curious about.
It is asphalt today and, yeah. We're not, we're not sure, but we will get that information for you.
Sounds good.
Just comments. First, I was glad to hear about the applicant's efforts to address gaps in the rear buffer to address, you know, some existing, pre-existing issues that I think some of the adjacent residents have been struggling with. Appreciate Ms. Bush's comments regarding lighting and such. I guess the, the one concern that I hope that the applicant and/or staff can bring me information back at a later date would be regarding the existing buffer and changes that would occur along Weston Parkway. As we all know, Weston Parkway is a, it's a very special street in the town. It's got a certain look and feel and a character to it that, you know, it's, it's just a special place. So while I appreciate that the parking expansion going up on the north side along Weston doesn't really remove any trees, it's still moving vehicles 20 feet closer to the road. So if there's something that can be done to help soften that, screen that, supplemental plantings or something, I think that would be good to know. Would share Ms. Robinson's comments, I guess, regarding the street-side trail. Typically, we're not a big fan of asphalt. It's... Looks good when it's put in, doesn't look good five years after that.
But it's easier to run on.
It is... I hear ya.
It is easier to run on.
But if we're gonna expand that, that I hope that we expand it in a way that pushes it closer to Weston Parkway and not into the buffer that results in the loss of more trees. So those would just be my initial comments. I will say that I'm excited to see Red Storm expand. I'm excited to see them buy. I'm excited to see them stay in Cary. You know, so those are great things. I think that what we see before us today is, you know, a couple of little small minor details, issues that I think can be worked out as this moves throughout the process.
Mr. Yurha?
Mr. Loyack mentioned that we have 203 spaces today and he needs to go to 260. What is the required number?
What they're requesting is a 48% increase to the ordinance requirement. The ordinance requirement for an office parking lot would be one space per 300 square feet. And so what they're asking for, what they have currently is a 28% increase. So they've got one space per 260 square feet of office space. They're asking for one parking space per 203 square feet of office space. So it's a 48% increase from our typical LDO standards.
What would be the number that would be required today? Would be 100 and something, I assume.
I'm sorry, I wasn't following your question. I'm sorry. So they have 200... 176 is all that's required per the ordinance.
176.
But they have 203, which was allowed at the time. It was within staff's authority to grant up to 30%.
So it's... As we speak, it's, on paper at least, overparked from 176 to 203.
It was approved for...
Right.
So it's... It was an allowable increase.
Yes. And going to 260, if we approve it, would be allowable also.
Only if council approves it.
Right. As it turns out, if we only... The ordinance requires 176, we're going to 260. Just to put that in perspective, that we have a request here for something that is considerably over the allowed number today, just wanted to point that out. I'm happy about the Type A buffer in the rear. I'm happy that I learned tonight that we're losing minimal trees along Weston Parkway. That's all good stuff. Does look like we're gonna lose some trees along the western side. I'm not sure of that, but it looked like that from the picture, that's for sure. But just philosophically, we're reducing the buffer or more impervious surface on a site that's already considerably overparked, using that as my definition of what overparked is, concerns me. But I'd like to follow this along the way. I have an open mind, and we'll see what happens with the planning and zoning board.
Other questions?
I would just follow up that not all office uses are created the same.
There you go.
Yes, we're saying.
You know, what might work for one user that has big lush office rooms and such might not necessarily be what a video game user might need whose spaces are smaller. Required and necessary are two entirely different things.
Other comments?
I was gonna say the same thing, and, you know, when you boil it down, looking at this diagram here, what you see is that the area that will have a negative impact as far as trees goes is limited to, actually, this just tiny little section over here on this western border. I'm very thankful that they're not eating a bunch of trees up on Weston Parkway. I think that they can amply compensate by addressing the buffer, the 50-foot buffer. I think this is gonna be very good for the residents and probably improves the situation, in my opinion, if they put in some nice trees in there that are appropriate for the amount of shade. I think it could really be a nice enhancement. So I see some positives here, but we'll see how it goes.
Other comments?
No, I just wanna echo. I think it's important to say that there's different kinds of office use, and we've been going through that in Regency and other places where a lot of these places are three shifts, which also spreads traffic out. And if you've got the buffer in the back, I think you're addressing, you know, some of the light spillover that you have, and I think that should just be carefully looked at as it goes through site plan. But in the end, it's accommodating the need. Part of our Imagine Cary is growing our existing business, and we have an opportunity here to have, you know, an office area upgraded, and we have a company staying in Cary. I mean, you know, we've got a way at all, but in the end, I'm having a hard time understanding how this, as long as those conditions are met and some of those other things are addressed at site plan, hurts anybody. I truly do because we're... Anytime you have a vibrant parcel that is active and healthy and growing, that's gotta help. It's not like uses with residential, but it's gotta help the community. Last thing we need is a nice, pretty parkway and an empty office building. That's my thoughts.
George?
I appreciate... I concur with what everybody said. The 50-foot buffer proposed Type A on the back, as I look at what's next to it, clearly I just like the attention to be... There is a 50-foot bumper they're gonna supplement, but clearly the issue appears to be from Ms. Edwards, and the one... There's the one house that's really impacted. I just like the, through site plan and whatever, plantings or whatever, I just... I think that needs special attention because clearly that's the one that's touching it. We could say 50 feet, and you back up against forest, and 50 feet doesn't mean anything to the forest, and 50 feet doesn't mean anything to half of Ms. Edwards' backyard, but it means something to the western part of her backyard. So that's what I hope gets paid attention to, and maybe the applicant can work with Ms. Edwards a way to make sure that's all taken care of. I think that's... Then it'll be a win-win.
Thank you, Ms. George, and I'll sort of follow up on that. I don't know if Ms. Edwards is still here, she left. But I know that she had others comment as well, and I think we're really close here. I haven't heard any objection to the use. I've heard some concern about site plan issues. So I think further communication will help both sides. They get a better understanding, you get a better understanding of their concerns, and I think you're really close. I want to remind everybody that we're talking about a rezoning, which is the type of use. Worst-case scenario, Red Storm changes their mind after the rezoning, and they go away and something else comes in. That can happen, and there's nothing we can do about it. We talk about site plan and development plan. I want everyone to understand that that doesn't come before council unless it's a quasi-judicial hearing, and we had those tonight. But usually after a rezoning, it's a staff-approved process. So the rezoning, we decide the type of use, we accept conditions that are proposed, we can't demand conditions, and then the applicant develops based on those conditions, and that's what we get, and they work with staff to meet all the guidelines and all the requirements that the town has, including light and noise and traffic, et cetera. That's decided at site plan. So I want to make sure that those in attendance, if you're not familiar with the process, that's going on. And speaking of the process, so this, after we've made our comments and feedback for the applicant so that they can work with the residents as well, and you're welcome to contact us as well, and then it's gonna go to an advisory board of citizens called the Planning and Zoning Board, and they're gonna review it from a citizen's perspective, and then they're gonna provide us with a recommendation. Staff will provide us with a recommendation. We'll get information from the citizens. We'll get recommendations from the applicant of any changes or anything, and then we make a decision, and that's about three, four months, I'm guessing, somewhere around there in the future before we make that decision. So we have a lot of time to make this better than it is today, and like I said, I think it's close. So I thank everyone for being here, and if you have questions, Deborah Grannan is the expert contact for this particular project, so make sure you contact her, and if you don't remember that, you can contact me, you can find us all on the website, or contact anybody at the town. They'll put you in touch with me, and we'll get the right person to contact you. And I thank everyone for being here, and as I said, this is going to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review from this day.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Grannan. That concludes the regular portion of this meeting, so now we're gonna go into closed session, and when we return from closed session, we're gonna have a different kind of meeting called a quasi-judicial meeting. But before we do, we're gonna go in the closed session, and at this time, I'll recognize Mayor Pro Tem Bush for the motion.
Okay. Pursuant to GS 143-318-11A, 1 and 3, I move that we hold a closed session to consult with our attorneys that are employed by and are retained by the town in order to preserve their attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town and to prevent the disclosure of information that may be privileged or confidential by GS 143-318-10E.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. Motion carries unanimously.
[applause][1252.22]
We'll reconvene our council meeting at this time and we'll move into the quasi judicial process. We have two quasi judicial proceedings. As a reminder to those in our audience this evening, the council is conducting an evidentiary hearing, more like a court case rather than the other rezoning cases we had this evening. Council acts like the judge and can only accept evidence that is competent, material, and substantial. The North Carolina and the United States Constitution gives the applicant certain due process rights in an evidentiary hearing that council must comply with. Constitution really ties our hands in what evidence we can accept, and I apologize in advance for what might seem a burdensome or complex process. We will only consider competent material and substantial evidence from anyone who testified. By law, we can only accept testimony from expert witnesses regarding whether this development will impact property values, whether it will increase traffic resulting from the development, or whether it will pose a danger to public safety. To those that are with us this evening intending to testify that are not qualified as experts, we can accept your testimony on factual issues and what you have observed, not your opinion. We have a contractual attorney who is sitting with us to my left, and he will help determine who's an expert and who's not an expert, and what evidence we can consider. In addition, the hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. So at this time, we'll move to our first quasi judicial evidentiary hearing. Bidding Electronics?
Bidding.
Bidding. Sorry about that. Bidding Electric?
No, Electric.
Okay, let's try.
Hi.
Bidding Electric Office Development, 19 DP 0123. This case is before us tonight because the applicant has requested a modification to the town's development standards. All speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson who is on my right. And at this time, we're going to pause to allow those who like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths, and council will refrain from further action until this has been completed.
Easy for you.
Not really.
Ed's joke was comedy. He was like, where's Ms. George Joplin's shoemaker?
When you really need her. Teepak Cassie. Oh, there she is.
We should do a closed session before every quasi judicial.
Just eat sugar.
Sugar. With sugar.
After the sugar high comes the sugar drop.
How did Sean sneak out for the quasi?
He's up there at the top.
He's in the cheese.
At this time, I'll ask council members if they've had any site visits, expertise, communication, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an effective person to disclose, starting with Mr. Yerhoff.
I have not.
It's Bush.
I have not.
It's France.
No, sir.
I have not.
I have not.
I have not.
Mr. George, all right. Based on the disclosures you've heard from council members, I'd invite any party to this matter if they have an objection to any council member's participation in this hearing. Seeing none, we'll open the quasi judicial public hearing, and Mr. Hales of our staff will introduce this hearing.
Good evening, council. Next item for your consideration this evening is a request by Bidding Electric for a reduction in the width of the highway corridor buffer along I-40 near RDU Airport. Bidding Electric is an existing business located on West Chatham Street in downtown Cary, and the success of their business so far has led them to seek a larger facility elsewhere in the town. The applicant has identified a vacant 5.3-acre parcel in Gateway Center for development of their new facility. The property is at the intersection of Gateway Center Boulevard and North Gate Court and backs up to Interstate 40. The applicant's development plan proposes about 32,000 square feet of building consisting of about 7,000 square feet of office and 25,000 square feet of flex and warehouse space. An outdoor storage yard will be located behind the building with an open canopy along the western property line to provide protection for stored equipment. The outdoor storage yard is screened by an eight-foot privacy fence as required by town regulations. It's important to note that the overall development plan is subject to administrative approval. However, the need for outdoor storage has led the applicant to request a reduction in the width of the highway corridor buffer along Interstate 40. This request requires town council consideration and action before the plan can be acted upon by the town's development review committee. The land development ordinance establishes a 100-foot wide highway corridor buffer along Interstate 40 and other controlled access highways throughout the town. The applicant in this case is requesting to reduce the required 100-foot buffer to a width of 50 feet along the entire length of their I-40 frontage, which is approximately 390 feet. Portions of the storage canopy and open storage yard encroach into the required 100-foot buffer. This concludes staff's introduction to the case. Following the applicant and any other speakers, staff will return and provide an overview of the observations made in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hales. We'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant. Here with me tonight is Brandon Bidding of Bidding Electric. Also here is Mr. Richard Brown of Kimble Horn and Associates. They've done land planning and engineering, and Mr. Brown will be providing testimony in support of the findings that you all have to make pursuant to this quasi judicial proceeding. Kevin's done a great job of setting this up, and I will hand it off to Richard momentarily to walk through the evidence. Couple of high points that I want to hit that you will hear from Richard related to the testimony. The first is, technically, it is a reduction from 100 feet, which the town would otherwise require, to 50 feet. A couple of points on that, and it is noted on this slide that's in front of you. The first of which is, as you can see, the right-of-way actually starts to widen in this area, and the on-ramp taper actually doesn't start till, as you can see, kind of in this area here. But it's kind of in that range where the right-of-way has started to widen, but the road itself hasn't widened at the same time. And so the result, as is noted in the staff report, is you actually get extra vegetation than you would otherwise have because the right-of-way has started to expand, but the cement asphalt has not done so in a corresponding way. And as you can see noted on the slide, there's roughly 140 feet of vegetation between the town's required buffer and the edge of pavement. And so there's a significant vegetative buffer that will be provided regardless of whether it's 100 feet or 50 feet, as is requested in this case. The second point I want to make, as noted in the staff report, relates to visibility. The finished elevation and the average elevation of the corridor in this area, as is noted on page five of your staff report, is 324 feet. The average elevation of the building is 330 feet, and the average elevation of the berm where the vast majority of these trees lie is 336 feet. And so the berm is 12 feet higher than the right-of-way adjacent to it, and six feet higher than where the building is located. And so the result of that, we believe, is that even with the reduction, there won't be a meaningful opportunity for visibility to be increased because of that berm and the manner in which it sits relative to the right-of-way that it sits next to. The third point I want to make, and then I'm going to hand it off to Richard, relates to the improvements that are proposed in this area. There aren't any buildings. There are structures. There's a structure located, but there's not a building proposed for this area. The structure's going to be a covered outdoor open area that you'll hear about from Richard. Otherwise, this area that we're seeking the request for, is seeking the reduction for, is designed to facilitate the outdoor storage of generators and other electrical material that they need in order to support their building. And so with that, I will conclude my brief presentation and hand it off to Mr. Brown to walk through the evidentiary findings that you all have to make.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Richard Brown, Kimble Horn and Associates. I'm a landscape architect at 421 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. Good to be with you tonight. And to just pick up on some of the technical aspects that Jason and Kevin had laid out ahead with respect to this buffer reduction or consideration of this buffer reduction, as you know, is based on the criteria of, or taken into consideration, the topography, surrounding land uses, actual location of the controlled access highway, size and shape of the parcel, as well as the impact of the usability of the property. And I'll attempt to speak to those as succinctly and effectively as we can. With respect to the first being topography, I think it was mentioned what the slopes along the site are. But I have a few exhibits that should be in your packet that hopefully will help illustrate some of the information. But this is the site plan that is before staff for review, just for context and reference, as in context with the requested reduction. Currently, the topography across this site is about a 31-foot fall sort of directionally this way. And so it creates a pretty, sometimes not unique to this area, but specific to this site and the size and shape combined with it, creates a pretty significant constraint on the property. Adding in the 100-foot buffer essentially takes that into an average of a 14% gradient across the site. Obviously, can't operate a lot of business and operations on that type of gradient, so it would require the introduction of additional land area outside of the buffer for tie-outs of a pretty substantial slope, or either large retaining walls that would have to tie back into the buffer or be outside of that buffer influence area. So significant in that way. As Jason mentioned, there is a grade also along, call it sort of north and south across this property line or plan, north and south that you're looking at. That does vary, and I'll show you a profile that will hopefully illustrate the condition that we would end up with, with a buffer reduction, and I believe a positive light in this case. So with regard to visibility and screening along there, just to add to Jason's comments in the intro, we are submitting that the reduction will still meet the intent of LDO Section 7.2.15. And the average grade, as Jason mentioned, of the corridor is around that 324 elevation. The building elevation is a few feet higher at 330, and the 12-foot average berm along that frontage of the corridor essentially hides the large majority of any of the buildings and/or operation that will be on the site. And I'll show you a little bit more of that in this profile exhibit. So sorry about the order, but just to visually describe what that looks like is the existing 324 elevation that, along the frontage of our property, and the finished elevation of the building and the relationship there, as you see here in the existing berm, that will not be disturbed with this buffer reduction. This slope ties out short of the requested buffer reduction, and then, as you can see, dies back down into a low. So this is the profile of what you would, the average profile of what you see. It varies along that corridor, but that's the average, not the worst or the best, but the average through there. So effectively, not sure how visible it is on your screens or in the packet, but we've tried to dash in a reference line along the top of the building, just to illustrate the statement that we submit to you in that profile. So with regard to size and shape of the site, just essentially back to this.
The site plan exhibit, the existing site is, as you see here, sort of trapezoidal in shape or diamond shaped. It's off of a right-of-way that's.
That's curving and sort of wedge-shaped in there. So with regard to that, the shape of it's already problematic. Then, as I think Kevin mentioned, we're around a little short of 5.3 acres existing. Together with all of the constraints that are required by the LDO, which we are complying with in our application, the addition of the 100-foot buffer along with all of those other constraints limit or reduce the site developable area down to about 3.65 acres or a little above. So a significant impact to the size and shape of the property. So just real quickly, some of those development regulation constraints are the dedication of right-of-way along North Gate Court and to a lesser degree along Gateway Center Boulevard. We do have buffers around the perimeter of the site on all sides, a 30-foot street yard in addition to the right-of-way dedication along North Gate. And all together with the buffer along the corridor results in that net developable area. So the rationale there is that the impact of the 100-foot wide buffer coupled with all of the additional size and shape constraints of the property and the additional LDO constraints along North Gate result in a significant impact to the development potential of the site. And for this operation and meeting fire, circulation, access, and emergency services, all of those things to be allowed, just pressure, puts a lot of pressure on that, this site. Location and controlled access to the highway, very briefly, with regard to that, the property is bound on that east side by the interstate highway. It's that variable width right-of-way that starts, as Jason explained, infringing onto the on-ramp. And the full controlled access begins there at that, as you can see, the transition point. Maybe Kevin's exhibit is a better one than mine at showing again just how the actual location of that controlled access highway doesn't provide any additional encumbrance by the development of this property. With respect to usability of the property, the LDO requires also cross-access, as you can see, on both sides. One's existing that we're connecting to, one we're providing and stubbing per the LDO. And again, for some of the same reasons listed above, the impact of that 100-foot wide or the full width buffer poses significant constraints with severe limitations to the usability of the property. With consideration to the surrounding land uses, this is an existing business center park, as you know, Gateway Business Park with a lot of similar business office and light to medium industrial uses, so very compatible in those terms. No residential uses in proximity to the. No residential uses in proximity to this property. So in that way, consistent with the intent and that particular criteria of consideration of the buffer reduction, so no residential land uses are within that proximity. Additionally, to the criteria that we're speaking to, there are supplemental buffer plantings that will be added, and this is, the landscape plan is submitted along with the development plan that's under review today. As you can see, we will plant as needed to ensure a full type A buffer along the full extent of that corridor, and this represents the plantings necessary to do that. So, and then along with that, just again, in your package, you should see Exhibit 3, which is the materials that will be included. We do, just real quick for application and reference, we are also providing a fully opaque eight-foot tall wood fence along the perimeter in addition to that type A buffer planting standard. Now, there are, there is a retained condition along here as the site dictates in order to retain that, so that the low side of the wall would be towards the side and the corridor buffer, and then the side here would be retaining. And then the rest of this is without a wall, but the berm itself actually screens that from view. So material on that wall would be similar material to this century wall, which meets the intent of the UDO in my professional opinion and is up for, is in review currently with staff. And that would be, that or a similar comparable wall system would be proposed at that corner where it would be retaining. Otherwise, this is a representation of the wood, opaque wood fence screening materials. But so just with regard to materials, that is what we would be proposing there. Lastly, and as quickly as I can, we are also addressing the, under the minor modifications approval of LDO section 3.19(c)(2), advancing the goals and purposes of the LDO and relieving practical difficulties in development of the site. And we submit, I submit that the proposed 50-foot buffer reduction will relieve the practical difficulties of development of the site based on the following criteria. The unnecessary hardship would result from the strict application of the ordinance if it shall not be necessary to demonstrate, it says, in the absence of the variance, that no reasonable use can be made of the property. So in my professional opinion, it is, it would create an unnecessary hardship resulting from the application of the 100-foot wide buffer coupled with all of the constraints mentioned above on this particular site. Secondly, the hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property. As mentioned previously in testimony, several different peculiarities exist on this property, including size and shape, topography, constraints from the LDO for the development potential of the property. So it does have some fairly peculiar things in addition to right-of-way dedication and street yards and the other buffer requirements that we're meeting. And then, the hardship did not result, thirdly, from the actions taken by the applicant or the property owner. There has been no action taken on the property by our client or, as to our knowledge, the owner that would result in creating the hardship. And then lastly, the requested variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose and intent of the ordinance, such that safety is secured and substantial justice is achieved. And then I would submit that this testimony and this proposal that's in front of you is consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. For the reasons that we have presented tonight, creates the 50-foot buffer that you have the ability to approve it. Also, we are supplementing the plantings and from a screening standpoint, you will not be able to see any better into the site once it's developed than previously. In fact, with the installation of the fence and additional vegetation, I would argue that it would be less visible and more opaque than it is today. So with that, finally, in my professional opinion as a landscape architect, the granting of this request will not take this site out of compliance with any other LDO requirements and regulations. And I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. At this time, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation in chief. We would ask that the council accept into evidence copies of the staff report and the attachments related thereto, and that the council take judicial notice of the contents of the town's land development ordinance and the other adopted plans. And with that, with the admission of that additional testimony, we believe we've satisfied our prima facie obligation to present evidence in support of these findings and would respectfully request you all's approval of the case. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baron. This time, I would invite speakers who have been sworn in to speak in support of the application to approach the podium. Anyone to speak in support. Seeing no one, we'll ask if there's any need for cross-examination. Nope. All right, we'll open the hearing to those who are opposed to the request. Anybody here opposed to the request? Moving right along now, we'll call on staff to provide a professional observations about the request.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I'll kind of shorten my presentation because Mr. Adams actually went, did a very thorough examination of his exhibits, but I did mark up cross-section or smaller version of his cross-section to give you a better idea of what was going on in the small space, cut out the building. You had the existing interstate grade at 324 approximately, then you have the existing yard elevation, and you can see they're relatively equal. In between those, you have a 50-foot berm which would be protected under our buffer regulations, it wouldn't be able to be cleared in the future. And then you have a variable width strip of land in NCDOT right-of-way, which does not enjoy the same protections for future disturbance. However, we're unaware of any immediate plans for NCDOT to make any improvements in that immediate stretch. Talked a little bit about surrounding development. Existing Gateway Center is predominantly one-story flex and warehouse buildings. Would be worth to point out that Carolina Restoration Services, which didn't appear on the earlier aerial photography, was built very recently. It is in a similar situation, two-story office and flex warehouse building with open storage yard behind, slightly smaller yard. They enjoyed the benefit of having more of the frontage along the exit ramp, and so their buffer is 70-foot in some places and going down to 50-foot as you go across the back of that frontage. If you look farther to the west, there's a lot of undeveloped land. There are two parcels remaining on North Gate Court, and then you get into a very large county-owned piece of wetlands that really has no meaningful development potential in the future. Mr. Baron covered it very briefly, but there's a couple of dimensions. The distance of the existing edge of pavement from the property line today varies from 113-foot approximately on the western end of the site to 140-foot as that entry, as that exit ramp begins to pull away from the main travel lanes. This concludes staff's presentation. Just a reminder, you have only a single action before you this evening, which is the reduction to the width of the highway corridor buffer. And a summary of the approval criteria can be found in your staff report. We're available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hales. It's my duty to ask council members and both parties if they believe evidence has been presented that warrants a continuance of this hearing. No, all right, we'll continue on, and we'll begin the deliberative phase of the hearing, and I'll ask council members for their comments or questions.
Can I ask a question before you? Just the fence and the additional supplemental plantings, those are conditions that are part of the modification request, so they are.
They're actually required by the LDO. Outdoor storage is required to be screened with an eastward fence, and the highway corridor buffer is required to meet a type A standard, so the evergreens are there to supplement it.
Okay, so they're just part of the LDO, they're not anything supplemental or conditioned or?
Correct, they'd be there regardless of the width.
Okay, thank you.
If it remained outdoor storage?
If their outdoor storage remained.
Somebody could do away with outdoor storage and they wouldn't have to keep the fences up.
The plantings are what the plantings are. You'd have to supplement it to meet a type A standard, and most native forest doesn't have the evergreen component, but the fence would be required only for outdoor storage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So could you go back to the slide that said Exhibit 4? So here's my thought about this. Like, I really like Exhibit 4 because it helps me see the site and how the buffer would screen the building. My only problem with it is that it's a perspective from the opposite lane of traffic. You're looking at it, I'll wait for you to get, there you go. You're looking at it from a way that you would never be looking at the building because what I'd really like to see is it from the opposite side. What does it look like when you're traveling eastbound on 40 and you're looking up at the site? What does that storage building look like? What does the reduced buffer look like? That would give me the comfort of knowing, hey, this is going to be okay, you know, because that, I think, is from the opposite perspective, Don. I mean, this is like a westward.
So this is looking west?
This is looking, unless I'm wrong, I mean, this appears to me like you're looking kind of westward. And you don't drive on the left side of the road here, you drive on the right side, so I want to know what the cars driving on the right side going eastbound would be looking at. That would be very helpful to me. I feel like my responsibility, you know, in protecting these buffers is to say, if I'm going to give a reduction for the buffers, to say, have they made a compelling reason why in the near future it would look okay? And then, would there be the contemplation allowed? I'm contemplating what it would look like in the far future. So what happens if I-40 ends up being expanded? I mean, I know you say there are no plans in the immediate future, but I mean, what happens in 15 years when somebody says, this isn't enough lanes, we need to add another lane, and they cut into that further, and now we don't have a lot of those trees that were in your yellow oval? So those are the considerations that I have. I would have felt a little bit more comfort in being able to go with this if I understood what the visual impacts would be in those two scenarios, looking from the east, or looking from the west toward the east.
May I? So what I would just offer is, this wasn't, the profile isn't, can't really be an illustration of what you would see. I don't think we can enter that kind of an exhibit into testimony, but it's a profile not intended to be the best case or the worst case through the site. So we've struck it through sort of the middle, the average, so where that's not the highest point of the berm or the lowest point of the berm, but it's just a, it was just sort of a coin toss as to whether we flipped it, you know, this way or that way, but it's a section profile through the site, not really intended to be, this is what you're going to see and what you're not going to see.
Yeah, okay, I understand that. I understand that you can only do so much. It is a little bit difficult for us than when you say, well, here's a sightline, so you know, by demonstrating a sightline, that would suggest like, hey, people up here, over here, looking up here, aren't going to see a building. I don't see the other building, the auxiliary building, being illustrated on here to understand how that really is seen from 40, so.
Parking shed. The parking shed.
Yeah.
The height of the parking shed.
It is lower than the building, about 12, less than 15 feet. I thought that had made it on your final packet. We actually added that into the profile, but it may have gotten there late. But it is low, it's lower than the height of the berm and where it sits.
And these cars, if I've asked the right question, these cars that you, or whatever you're showing in the traffic lane of traffic, is that what you're showing in the far-right representation? But that is the eastbound side of the road, but, and if I understand the way the road's crowned, if they were to add more lanes, they wouldn't be any higher. They're going to go down further, and the closer you get to a berm, the steeper the angle of trying to see over it. So it's almost like the closer you get to a wall, the less you have to see over it. Is that?
I think the point that you're making is, the point that we made in testimony is, this wouldn't change with any additional lanes that are added by NCDOT or, you know, the Federal Highway Administration. Nothing would change with respect to the finished elevation of this point right here, nor would the finished elevation of this point right here. And so as expansion would occur, you know, like you said, it would kind of occur in this direction logically, and so you would start to introduce steeper slopes or potentially, like we've done in another portion of the site, as was mentioned, you start to introduce walls in order to create those.
Okay, that clarifies it. Can I continue? All right, so the spirit, either this word came out, spirit, or the law, or intent was brought up in the summary.
Spirit and intent of the ordinance.
Spirit and intent of the ordinance, the original ordinance of the LDO. The reason we have the buffer, those of you that voted for this buffer, Jack, when we had, you know, was it for, you know, Conestoga wagons or whatever it was back then, but the intent of this buffer being what it is was to provide sufficient distance so that you didn't see buildings along the major corridors. Like when you drive through Greensboro and you see the brewery or Red Oak or whatever it is beside, is that, am I getting at the original? I want to find out the original intent so I can say whether we're meeting the original intent.
I would say that the intent is to not see development, intense development from the side of the highway. That's the intent. Now, the reality is there are places in Cary that have met the thorough fair buffer requirements that, depending on the time of the year, yes, you see the building or you see the developments that's over there, but the intent is to shield the development as much as possible.
But also, when we start looking at a corridor where we're looking at 10 and 12-story buildings, that we want to be viewed from the interstate, whether it's a hotel or like Quintiles, is that places like formerly Quintiles?
It's Durham, though.
But we're not trying to say you can't see development. If you put a high-rise there where we want to put high-rises, you could see it.
Right, but the trees soften it.
Okay, okay. But I'm with, so I'm just trying to understand the intent so I can properly make a decision on the intent. The intent's to not see anything, then, I don't believe they can see anything, but the intent's also to provide noise barrier or distance.
Pleasant driving experience, I mean, there could be a lot of.
I mean, I think given, sorry. Given the topography of the site in question, and given that we're not, or the applicant is not proposing a multi-story 40, 50-tall building, you know, even if they weren't supplanting the buffer, which they're offering to do, or putting in the fence, which they're offering to do, it would have to be a pretty tall building in order to be able to see this from the highway. You know, I mean, luckily, what we're considering tonight is pretty much just the buffer reduction. We're not considering traffic, we're not considering noise, we're not considering lighting and some of those things, but we're considering the buffer reduction. It's a little interesting to me that the site immediately to the east of this one gets to take advantage of a reduction in a buffer because that's right where the off-ramp starts, so they get to go down to 70 to 50 feet, whereas, you know, this property line was not quite in the right spot, so they don't get to. But from the edge of the pavement on the highway existing, that understanding that the road can be widened later on, is anywhere from 114 to 140 feet before the town's buffer requirement kicks in. To Ken's point, is well taken, that even if the road or the 40 did get widened, the closer you put it into the hill, that just makes it that much harder, you know, you've got to be driving a really tall truck to see over that. I appreciate the applicant's commitment to supplanting the buffer. I appreciate the applicant's, you know, it's a town requirement for the fence, although I can say, and Jack will attest, I'm not the biggest fan of a wooden fence, but the reality is whether the fence is there or not, you're not going to see the project As we just talked about in our previous non-quasi-meeting, I mean, here we have another Cary-born-and-bread company that is expanding, doing well, and God bless them, and they've outgrown their current facility, which happens to be in our gateway into downtown Cary. I don't want to speculate, and I don't want to drive the attorney here nuts, but, you know.
But.
Go ahead, but, there's always a but.
Industrial use in our gateway to downtown Cary would be a really bad thing if they were to relocate in an area where you couldn't see them. So it's, again, that's total speculation.
You would never base your opinion.
You would never base your opinion.
I would never do that because we're, we're, we are up here as judge and jury, and we are only considering fact, and that is all I am doing right now.
Although this is not a special use hearing.
It's quasi-judicial. We still have to act as judge and jury.
But it's not a special use.
But thank you.
Cool.
Slight difference. Cool.
So, I, I do believe, as Mr. George mentioned, they meet the spirit and intent of the ordinance. If this site were up on a hill, I'd feel a lot different about it. I really would. That's where I was going.
But it's not. It's, it's in a hole or a bowl or however you want to call it. Everything else around it is of like-kind quality type uses. I don't feel they're really hurting anybody, and I just, I just don't think you're going to see it, so.
Can I, the outdoor yard thing, I guess there's, I mean, there could be bucket trucks. It's an electric company, right? So maybe it could be bucket trucks out there, and there's no, so you're putting the building height right here, but that's the thing where you do get, the more you climb that hill toward that 330 or whatever that number is, as you get toward the back edge of the property, then if bucket trucks are parked or buckets are extended or tested or whatever, we are, the closer you get, the more they're likely to be seen. But I, I don't typically, unless you're going to hang an American flag off of it or something, you typically don't park a bucket truck with a bucket up. So I, I don't see an issue with, with parking outside, but that would be the one thing that kind of raised, you know, an electric company and, and an open yard, it's not like they're putting cinder blocks out there or collecting stone for, for scooping up. It's, it could be a piece of equipment that's high.
Sure, and a couple of things. First, there's a statement of, a summary of the intent of the purpose statement for the highway corridor buffer on page two of the staff report, if you want to refer to that, as far as those language. The finished floor elevation of the building's 327. The bottom of that, that slope is 330, so there's only three foot of fall across that yard. If the building's 21 feet tall, you're not really going to see the top of a bucket truck unless it is parked or extended. And, and part of the purpose, and I'm not going to speak for the applicant, but part of the purpose of having a secure yard is so you don't have to park them with them. Buckets up. You see it in parking lots because they don't want people climbing in the buckets.
Or to secure them.
Correct.
And I would just add to that, that there's, with the eighth, additional eight-foot height of the fence that is further, I think establishes that point.
Other questions or comments?
The only other comment I have is, I'm trying to, I'm a visual person, so trying to visualize some of this and understanding that, you know, the deceleration lane, and, and you mentioned in the staff report, you know, Carolina Restoration, and also mentioned the Restaurant Depot. You can see the Restaurant Depot, no problem from, no problem. And it's because of, you know, the exit ramps and where it is, and it's at the, you know, at the intersection of two major roads, along with the deceleration and with our lovely, what do you call it, wildflower, where we chop down all the trees and plant wildflowers, which is, you know, a wonderful idea, but now you can see no problem in the Restaurant Depot. So I think there's a lot of intents and purposes, just like the Wildflower program, that did a great thing. At the same point, no problem seeing the Restaurant Depot. So I, I actually like all of the, the items that were presented to me with, with respect to what, what's already being done with the LDO and supplemental plannings that are already required. And I also appreciate council members' very thoughtful questions about what would happen if we, you know, we have been widening, right? It's happened already.
Yep.
Right? So I, I definitely think that's, that's important. And then there was a talk about the retaining walls, and I was glad that you all pointed out where those were. So I think from my perspective, a lot of, there's a lot of good in this, and I think it's actually better than what's right next to it. So I, from that perspective, it, it seems like an appropriate, appropriate modification request.
Any other comments? Okay, we're going to move to the, we'll close the public comment portion and move to the motion phase of the hearing on the proposed buffer reduction. Anybody want to offer a motion?
I'll make a motion that for the reasons discussed, that we approve the modification request made by the applicant as the request meets all of the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries six to one. Mr. Silverstein, if everything's in order, we'll close this public hearing.
It is, Mayor.
All right, we're closing the public hearing and moving to our second evidentiary hearing. The Airport Boulevard Mini Storage Development 18 SU002 and 18 DP0508. This case is before us tonight because the applicant requires a special use permit. All speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is to my right. And at this time, we'll pause to allow those individuals who'd like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths. And we'll pause at this time until that has been completed.
Or else you're excused for the time.
Need a couple of council members to come back and we'll get started. All righty. I'll now ask council members if they've had any site visits, expertise, communications, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting with Mr. George.
I have not.
Ms. Robinson?
Not.
Mr. Smith?
Have not.
I have not, Mr. France?
No, sir.
Ms. Bush?
I have not.
Ms. Jervis? Based on the disclosures you've heard from council members, I'd abide any party at this time if they have an objection to council members participating in this hearing. Seeing no one will continue, we'll open the quasi-judicial public hearing, and I'll recognize Mr. Hales of our staff to introduce the item.
Thank you. The next case before you this evening is a request by Leon Capital Group for development of a mini-storage site located on Airport Boulevard. This case involves two different pieces that council should consider independently of one another. The first is an application for special use permit, which involves the use of the land and its appropriateness at this particular location. And the second piece is the development plan itself, which involves the plan for this particular layout. The proposed development involves two parcels totaling almost six acres at the intersection of Airport Boulevard and Davis Drive. However, the development plan covers only about one-half of that total area. The subject site is almost two and a half acres located in southwestern corner of the six acres assemblage. The adjacent property to the west is developed as traditional, single-story mini-storage. Property to the south is developed as a large lot subdivision in Morrisville's jurisdiction. The remainder of the six acres to the east of the development is vacant and zoned for a variety of commercial uses and approved in February of last year. There are a number of development projects in the surrounding community. Savon Subdivision and Franklin at Carpenter Park are two predominantly residential developments currently under construction. Twin Lakes Mixed Use Project is currently under construction and will provide commercial services across Davis Drive to the east. And an age-targeted multifamily development to the southeast overture at Twin Lakes is currently in plan review with the Development Review Committee. The site involves a subdivision of about two and a half acres from the parent parcels with a thin strip of property connecting the site to Airport Boulevard. A three-story, 81,500-square-foot mini-storage building will be located in the southwestern corner of the site, surrounded by parking and service aisles. A 20-foot Type C buffer will be located adjacent to the existing mini-storage site, and a 65-foot Type A buffer will be located along the southern property line adjacent to the residences. A pond located to the east of the proposed building will provide stormwater mitigation for the product, project. The development plan does include one administrative modification to the town's development standards. The land development ordinance requires sidewalk to be provided on both sides of non-residential streets. In this case, the applicant has requested to provide sidewalk on only one side of the new street. Development Review Committee has approved the elimination of sidewalk on the western side of the street shown here, and this is due to the lack of pedestrian accommodation and absence of a destination to which sidewalk on that side of the street would really add utility. As mentioned before, the proposed building is 81,500 square feet, over, spread over three stories, or about 40 foot in height. Dexter material is modular masonry and neutral earth tones, and the windows shown on the elevations will provide visibility into the lobby spaces, hallways, or into interior display areas with charcoal gray doors visible from outside. That concludes staff's introductory presentation. Following the applicant, any other speakers? We'll be back to discuss her findings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hales. We'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Jamie Schwaitler, here on behalf of the applicant, Leon Capital Group, to present this case. Thank you for your consideration of this case tonight. I know that you've heard several self-storage cases in the last couple of years, and I'd like to highlight how this case is a little bit different, mainly because of the appropriateness of the location of this use and how we've worked that location into the site. As Kevin mentioned, there's a, it's kind of a split zoning on this parcel, and the portion you see in purple on your screen is approximately the area that will be covered by the development plan. The remainder of that parcel, as long, as well as the one on the corner, was recently rezoned to the general commercial conditional use last year, and so that is not part of the consideration tonight. What also makes this case a little bit different is that we're on the edge of that commercial center, and so we're, what we're doing with a self-storage that's climate-controlled and three-story with a brick and, and nice exterior is different from the existing type of self-storage that's next door, the, the single-story, flat linear design. We've also included a significant buffer along the rear of the property that will naturally separate us from the residential use to the south and those homes, you'll hear some testimony tonight, of how far those homes are from the property line. So there's a significant buffer for the, that neighboring parcel, which development is in Morrisville's jurisdiction. As Kevin mentioned, there's going to be two decisions that are before you tonight and two separate set of standards. Now, we'll go through with the witnesses each of those criteria for the standards, both the six approval criteria and 3.9.2 for the quasi-judicial factors, as well as the LDO standard and 3.8.3 for the special use permit. Now, because there's a lot of factors and a lot of things to consider, we've broken them down to this chart and covered five different aspects and kind of aligned the criteria with those aspects. First, you'll hear evidence about the town plans. Does this plan conform with the applicable requirements of the LDO? Is it generally conforming with the comprehensive plan? Then we'll move into safety aspects, where we cover both criteria under the QJ standard and the SUP standard. Impacts, whether this adequately protects other property from potential adverse impacts. Harmony, as well as the need for this use in this area. And finally, we'll present testimony from a traffic engineer on traffic and circulation. And before I call that witness, I'd just like to highlight a few of the areas of consistency with the town plans. This is consistent with Cary LDO. The portion of the property is zoned ORD, and that's why we need the special, special use permit before you tonight for self-storage. There's no special, separate conditions for self-storage itself, so there won't be any separate criteria you'll hear from there. But it's consistent with the future growth framework map in that although this area is designated as a commercial center on the future growth framework map, and the use is a, classified as industrial use, this type of self-storage really is more akin to a commercial use. You're going to have a three-story building faced in Mason Man brick with windows and fenestration that looks more like a small-scale, commercial-format building. In combination with its proximity to the corner piece, which is not only zoned a general commercial, but, but is anticipated will be coming forth as a separate development plan and commercial use, you're completing that corner and transitioning the commercial use from the corner to this kind of, this industrial use that looks like a commercial use and acts like a commercial use to the actual industrial use that's existing to the west of the parcel. And the commercial center also not only focuses on commercial uses, but service needs of nearby neighborhoods and envisions one-to-three-story buildings. The self-storage use is such a use that services all these nearby residents that are moving in. Some are downsizing, some are relocating from different areas, and of course, we have the three-story limitation on the height that's consistent with that future growth framework designation. It's also consistent with several of the policies in the Cary Community Plan. I'd just like to highlight three of those. From the SHAPE chapter, Policy 4 encourages infill development. The site, as I mentioned, is surrounded by an existing self-storage use as well as commercial uses and residential uses, and makes it an ideal infill portion that as that corner piece fills out, will be kind of a nice transition from, from the commercial to the industrial. SHOP Policy 2 aims to focus commercial uses within existing and planned commercial centers. Again, this is service-oriented business that, that will be more like that commercial center and filling out that corner. And finally, the SERVE Policy 5 has its intent to manage and protect the natural environment and incorporate natural features into the built environment. The southern border, as I mentioned, will have a 60-foot, 60 feet of existing vegetation that'll be a significant buffer for those residents and will preserve their quality of life. And with that, I'd like to call my first witness, Mr. Justin Brown.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Justin Brown. I'm with Pinoni Associates at an address of 5430 Wade Park Boulevard in the city of Raleigh. I'm the civil engineer record for the project. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from SUNY Institute of Technology and have 12 years' experience in this field. I was responsible for the designing of the project and am testifying on the plan consistency with the land development ordinance as well as the safety of the design.
At this time, I'd like to tender Mr. Brown as an expert in engineering and site layout.
As far as the consistency with the zoning portion of the site was rezoned last year, general commercial conditional use shown in red above. Remaining of the site stayed ORD, office, research, development. This is where the mini-storage use is proposed, which is located in the purple area on the slide. The land development ordinance indicates mini-storage is a type of industrial use, warehouse, and freight movement, and is allowed in the ORD with a special use permit. 2018 rezoning conditions do not impact this proposed use because of the different area of the parcel. There are no identified separate special use conditions, as Jamie had mentioned, for the self-storage, so the requirements are just the land development ordinance itself. As shown on the chart that is located on our cover sheet, the plan is consistent with the land development ordinance requirements related to lot coverage, parking, setbacks, and buffers. Next, I'll get into QG Standard number four, which is safety. Building has been situated in the rear of the parcel to comply with the land development ordinance as well as its underlying zoning, which keeps it tucked away from the actual road. Site has a sidewalk located on the east side of the main drive, so it is accessible by patrons from the corner lot or Airport Boulevard to front registration or office area. Mini-storage does not experience high pedestrian activity. More often, people drive or haul items to a self-storage facility. Also reviewed the TIA, which has been submitted to the town, and very low traffic suggests low likelihood of pedestrian vehicular conflicts and low incidence of use. In any event, drives, parking, sidewalks satisfy the land development ordinance requirements and provide safe conditions for pedestrian vehicular circulation and provide safe access for emergency vehicles to and from the site. Full access drive off of Airport Boulevard has both a stop bar at the egress position of the drive onto Airport Boulevard, as well as a, a painted crosswalk across the proposed driveway. In my professional opinion, the layout of the facility will not materially endanger public health or safety. Site also has access to water, sewer, fire, police, and is close to Davis Drive and Airport Boulevard, which is identified as two thoroughfares within, within the town of Cary, which makes this location appropriately supported by town facilities. Next, I'll get into QJ Standard number two, which states adequately protects other property from potential adverse effects of proposed development. The need for this use and some factors relating to its impact on nearby properties. MiniStorage is a service-oriented use and becoming increasingly, increasingly popular with apartment dwellers, especially people moving into this area. The overture age-restricted apartment, which is slated just across Davis Drive, that was approved last year, less than a mile. We are also located less than a mile from Research Triangle Park, which is home to over 275 companies and growing daily. Employees also relocating to the area need storage while they search for permanent residences, therefore addressing the needed service aspect for this area. therefore addressing the needed service aspect for this area of Cary. Even though the building has been situated in the rear of site, a sixty-foot vegetated buffer has been proposed between existing neighborhood and self-storage use. Placement of the building rear of lot in recent rezoning suggests that the building will be a supporting use of the development on the more highly visible corner piece of the overall development.
I have no further questions for you. I'd like to call my next witness, Mr. Rich Kirkland.
It's always good to be back here. Again, my name is Rich Kirkland. I'm a certified general appraiser. I've been working in the area triangle for about twenty-three years. I'm also an MAI through the Appraisal Institute. I was asked to look at this project regarding the question of adjoining property values. Just a little further on my background, I appraise mini-storage facilities for banks, for construction loans and refinances. I've done that a number of cases, both for traditional, single-story, but also the multi-story climate-controlled units. And actually, in fact, I've got a little bit of an insider's view on things. My dad has been a manager of a mini-storage facility down in Fuquay for the last ten years or so, so real familiar with that use. Looked at the property, I believe the study I did was submitted as part of the package or?
That's right. The study was submitted as part of the staff report, and at this time, I'd like to tender Mr. Kirkland as an expert in appraisal and impact on property.
Okay. But in there, I've really identified the location and looked at those adjoining uses. The adjoining uses, again, obviously, there's the self-storage facility that's right next door. There's a lot of vacant land around it that's zoned for office or commercial uses. This type of use is commonly around office and commercial uses. It's not really an issue. There's a number of sources that I can cite in the report where around Cary, this is not going to be an impact on those types of uses that would be there, and clearly not going to be an impact on the adjoining self-storage facility. I've also included in here, I'll talk about it a little bit later, but the competition aspect really isn't an issue, too. They tend to be very synergistic. They're going to compete whether they're next door to each other or not, so it's not an issue for them as well. The two homes that are to the south are really the only areas to really look at and focus on. They are both located on five-acre sites, and the closest home is a little over 200 feet, about 225 feet away. And in fact, that home is currently closer to the existing self-storage facility than the new one that's proposed. There's a significant, I can know, you can see on the aerial up there, there's a significant amount of woods that's already there, and they're going to supplement that. I looked at a number of other self-storage facilities near other homes around. I looked at specifically looking over at Space Station on Highway 55, and they have the adjoining Highcroft Homes. I've measured some of those being as close as 160 feet from the existing mini-storage facility, as well as some of the multifamily uses within 100 feet. No sign of any impact on property values. I've also looked at the Country Storehouse. That's also off of 55. Familiar with that one. I've actually appraised that one. They have homes next door in Deveraux that are within 110 feet of that facility. And Havenside Court is, again, it's got a facility right next to a big, large townhouse development. Homes there about 100 feet from that facility as well. After that, I did look at one that is not in Cary, but it's out in Garner. I've included that one specifically because it's one I just recently appraised for a construction loan, and this actually shows an example of a new, more modern, three-story facility going in next to an existing, single-story facility, and also with large lot residential uses on either side of it. So again, it's very common located there, and I actually have a friend who actually lives in Turner Farms, so real familiar. I drive right past it every time I go to see him. So again, it's my professional opinion that the project as proposed is going to have no impact on those adjoining property values. It's also my professional opinion, this is a harmonious location from that for this type of a use. There's clearly already that type of use in existence there. It's well set off of the highway with very little visibility due to the existing trees that are there and no real areas for concern. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Kirkland, I have just a few for you. Did you prepare the report that was submitted to the staff in connection with this case?
I did.
And based on that report and your testimony tonight, is it your opinion that the plan adequately protects other property from potential adverse effects of the proposed development?
It is.
Is it also your opinion that the plan provides harmony and unity with development of nearby properties?
It is.
Can you explain to council how the plan will be in harmony with the scale, bulk, and character of the area in which it's located?
Well, again, the distance between the adjoining homes, those two homes to the south were really the only areas for concern. There's existing vegetation there. The use itself is going to be quieter than a lot of other uses that could go there based on this zoning. The amount of traffic and just any kind of exterior noise on that side, there's not much to speak of. Most of the parking's on the north side of that building. There's already self-storage buildings closer to those homes, and those homes are sitting on five-acre sites. That's going to be a very hard thing to find, and those five-acre sites are going to have to be fairly resistant to anything regardless because it's going to be such a rare product to find.
Did any of the comparable studies you used in your report have the significant as a buffer as we're proposing here?
No, this was further than the distance between the building and the other adjoining residential uses than the other ones I cited.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call my next witness, Mr. Drew Draper.
Good evening. My name is Drew Draper with Weatherall Engineering. Address is 1223 Jones Franklin Road, Raleigh 27607. A little bit about me, I've got a master's degree in transportation planning from Florida State University. Been practicing traffic engineering for nearly fifteen years. Completed hundreds of traffic studies, not only in North Carolina, but in numerous states across the country. I'm actively engaged in the Institute of Transportation Engineers, American Planning Association, and the Regional Transportation Alliance. I currently lead the traffic engineering and transportation service lines for Weatherall Engineering here locally.
And at this time, I'd like to tender Mr. Draper as an expert in transportation planning.
Very good.
Thank you. As noted in your staff report, we completed our comprehensive traffic impact analysis summary of 2018 last year, and as noted in there, we developed trip estimates for this site. Those were developed using the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. We anticipate the site generating approximately 208 trips on a daily basis. From a peak hour perspective during the AM peak hour, it's anticipated that we'll see eleven trips entering and twelve trips departing the site. During the PM peak hour, we're anticipating thirteen trips entering the site while eleven trips are exiting the site. Just one important note, consistent with the 2018 zoning condition three, prohibited uses are those exceeding 482 gross site trips in the AM peak hour and 448 gross site trips in the PM peak hour. So we are well below those limits at this site. So this proposed use is expected to generate very little traffic or congestion. Most of the traffic increases are due to the, you know, approved developments, which I'm sure you're all very aware of. There's a lot of background projects that have been approved that are really going to be generating a lot of traffic within this area. The traffic study we provided, adequate recommendations for improvements to mitigate traffic impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the proposed use. Those improvements include, one, modifying the signal timings at the Davis Drive and Airport Boulevard intersection; two, modifying the signal timings at the Davis Drive and Lake Grove Boulevard intersection; and three, constructing a full-access driveway at site entrance, number one. So due to the low expected traffic, as noted in the report, in my professional opinion, the committed improvements mitigate traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project. Also, it is my professional opinion, the proposed use will not cause undue traffic congestion or create a traffic hazard or unsafe pedestrian pathway. Thank you.
Mr. Draper, did you bring a copy of the TIA addendum with you tonight?
I did.
And we'd like to move that be admitted into evidence. I noted that that wasn't in the staff report. For some reason, we think it was just an oversight, and we've discussed it with staff, and I don't believe they had any objection to us admitting the addendum. That's all the questions I have. This concludes our prima facie case on the evidence here. I'd like to get back through this traffic and circulation plan just to show where the improvements are that Mr. Draper testified to, improvements one, two, and three in that order. And it brings us back to the criteria that are satisfied here tonight. I'll go again in terms of those five different issues and kind of highlight the evidence that you heard. First, we talked about the town plans conformance from Mr. Brown's testimony, and I outlined the different areas of the Cary community plan in which we're complying with. The proposed use or development plan is only required to generally conform to the comprehensive plan, and so even though this is designated as a commercial center with commercial use, it doesn't necessarily contemplate industrial use. Again, this type of climate-controlled self-storage is a little bit more of a closer to a hybrid of not your traditional linear self-storage use, not a full commercial use, but somewhere in between. And with the elevations that Mr. Hale showed that were part of the packet, you can see that the building looks much more like a small, commercial-format building or an office building than it does traditional industrial use. And so we contend that we conform generally with the comprehensive plan for the town plans and satisfying SUP standard A. As to safety, you heard testimony from Mr. Brown as well as from Mr. Draper about how this plan provides safe conditions for pedestrians. Usually, we're talking about traffic and how that pedestrian and vehicular safety issue interplays. Here, we have the benefit of a very low-traffic use, and a use that by its nature does not have a lot of pedestrian activity. There are not a lot of people that are manually bringing things to their storage center. They're usually driving in a truck, and they're driving slow, protecting their valuables. In any event, we've provided the adequate circulation with the testimony of where the placement of the sidewalks have been and a crosswalk has been added. We also heard testimony about impacts and harmony. Again, this is a use that is a little bit unique and that has sufficient order from the surrounding properties that are in Morrisville, both because of where those homes are located and the sixty-foot buffer that we're implementing, and that traffic, again, it's a very low use, far below what would generally trigger lots of improvements in this area. And we heard expert testimony about how those improvements that we've committed to sufficiently mitigate any of those problems. So for those reasons, and we'd ask that the staff report and all of those exhibits be admitted into evidence, and with that admission, we have provided competent material and substantial evidence that we've met, not only the factors for the SUP standards, but also the quasi-judicial standards sufficient to approve the development plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This time, I'd invite speakers who've been sworn in and wish to speak in support of the application to approach the podium. Any speakers to speak in support? We have had a handout that's the TIA, I believe. Does council believe they need time to review this, or should we continue? No objection? All right, we'll continue. Any need to cross-examine what you've heard so far? No. All right, we'll now open the hearing to those that are opposed to the request. Anyone to speak that is opposed? Seeing no one, we'll continue, and we'll call on staff to provide professional observations about the requests.
Thank you again. The subject property, as Ms. Schwedler indicated, is designated as a commercial center in the Magic Cary's growth framework map. Properties in this category are primarily defined by commercial shopping centers with residential office and institutional uses typically provided in support of the commercial focus. MiniStorage, however, is considered an industrial use by land development ordinance, and it's designated as warehouse storage in Magic Cary community plan, so therefore, it's not something we would typically see in a commercial center. Matter of fact, it's only mentioned as an incidental use in business and industrial Staff just took a quick look at frequency of other mini-storage uses in the immediate community. We looked at a three-mile radius from the subject parcels, and there are ten mini-storage facilities that showed up in our data. Of those, six are older externally-accessed mini-storage formats, your traditional one-story, roll-up doors on the outside, and four of the sites were hybrids where they had a mix of the traditional form and the internally-accessed, either designed that way from the get-go or retrofitted over time. However, supply is only one part of the equation. There are a number of residential units currently under construction or in plan review in the immediate area. Savon subdivision, which we discussed earlier, will build almost 300 new detached and townhome units just to the west of the site, and they're currently grading that site actively. Likewise, Franklin at Carpenter Park and the Carpenter Park Town Center pod is actually under construction now with 55, a mix of multifamily and townhome units. And finally, overture at Twin Lakes is currently in plan review and plans to add almost 200 age-targeted multifamily units once it makes its way through the Development Review Committee. One concern that staff did identify in the report was a lack of pedestrian connectivity between the site and the adjoining sites. Proposed pedestrian network design today connects the mini-storage building to the street-side trail up along Airport Boulevard. However, there is no pedestrian connection from this site over to the east. Right now, there's no development there, not an issue. However, future commercial service uses, there may be some utility to that. It just depends on how they develop. Transitions are important to the town, especially between non-residential and residential uses. As the applicant's team indicated, all the properties to the south are very large lot, all in excess of five acres. And looking at the distance of the closest corner of that residential house, based on GS measurements, is approximately 124 foot to the property line. Mr. Kirkland indicated it was even farther to the actual building itself. That concludes staff's summary of its observations on the proposed development. As a reminder, there are two actions before you this evening. The first that you would be taking action on is the special use, which is the use appropriate in this location, and the second is the development plan itself. Is the site acceptable as laid out? And with that, I stand ready to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hales. At this time, I'm required to ask if either party or council members believe there's evidence been presented to continue this hearing. Seeing none, we'll continue and open the deliberative phase of the hearing and ask council for questions or comments.
I think earlier you indicated that this will have earth tones. Is that correct?
That is.
Please tell me orange is not an earth tone.
Orange is not an earth tone.
That's all I agree.
Browns, tans, and charcoal gray roll-up doors.
Yeah. I appeal to you.
Other comments, questions?
Questions, comments? Are we ready for comments?
So the self-storage that's right next to it, the mini-storage that was approved in 2009, right? Is that?
It predates that. That was actually a cleanup. We had to go back, and it had been developed on the old ordinance, so when they went to refinance it, they were illegal, not conforming because they didn't have a special use. So we actually just cleaned up that zoning change.
So do you have an idea of when it was?
I do not, off the top of my head.
Okay. Because it doesn't, by looking at it, doesn't look like it conforms to any of our current standards? But is that accurate? I don't know how old it is or anything like that. That would be interesting information to have. Also, is this a single site that's being split, or is it a, because the way you have it on the screen, it looks like it's a single site with a line down the middle. Does that mean that that other part of that site is going to be a general commercial?
Answer your first question first. 2003 is when it was built.
Okay, thanks.
And then we cleaned it up in 2009. Answer your second question is, special use and development plan actually applies to both existing parcels. So the outline you see on the screen in red are the existing parcel lines today. As part of the development plan, we'd be approving a subdivision of that, which would follow basically the line you see of the green here.
So, oh.
And the remainder is that, so the remainder is what was rezoned to general commercial conditional use back in February of last year.
With the Magic Cary plant or when it was?
You saw rezoning last year. It was approved in February.
Okay. Those were my questions, comments. And just to make sure that we're all, everybody knows where it is, across the street, that large format grocery store is the Wegmans, right? And that's retail and commercial, correct? Or commercial?
Commercial, correct.
Okay. Well, I'll start unless you want to.
One question. That's a question.
Do you have a question?
Just so I'm clear, the large, empty area in front of the storage unit that's on the same parcel that's with the red lines, that can't become anything else in the future, can it? If this was approved, that stays green the whole time, or is that part of that general?
So that's part of the general commercial.
So something could go in front of the storage unit building?
Something like.
Something likely will go in front of the substance.
Likely will. Okay. That's helpful.
Questions, comments?
So I guess I'll start, comments since I started the role. I don't think it's a, personally, I don't think it's appropriate to have this storage unit right next to another storage unit. We have, we already have, when you counted the 10 mini storage units, already you counted the one, I see where the star is, right next, excuse me, to the red dot. So we already have 10 mini storage. We've been approving them quite consistently. I don't think it's an appropriate place. I think it's like putting two drive-throughs next to each other, which we hardly ever do without a prior approval. I'm also not a fan of it being so close to a premier. We've gotten a significant amount of kudos and excitement around this general commercial area and Wegmans being the biggest news that's probably hit the planet. And Cary for a while, besides Fenton. And this is a premier entrance to Cary. It's a beautiful street, Davis's Beautiful Drive, and aviation is going to continue into this Savon or whatever it's called neighborhood, right? Because it's going to have to be accessed by, you know, north, south, east, and west on Airport Boulevard. So they're going to be driving right by the one that's already there that we can't help. And then another one as well. And I just think there's a, personally, a more appropriate and better use. I think it should be general commercial. I believe that mini storages are industrial, even when they look like an office building. And I have, I just want to be clear, I have voted for them in the past, and they're the appropriate, in the appropriate place. You know, there's been one in Maynard that I thought it looked like it was an appropriate place inside an office complex. This is right in the middle of a residential, general commercial, a retail, and an area that's building. And for me, this is not the, this is not the best place for it.
Other comments, questions?
I'll agree with Lori. I don't have to say anything more.
Other comments?
I would just, I mean, I can't say I'm all warm and fuzzy on this one, but I've heard over and over again, and not undeservedly so, just to say, the concern of the plethora of storage units, whether that's Highway 55, I've heard it referred to as the Storage Unit Boulevard and whatever else, because they front the street and they are so much in your face. This is one that's actually going to be hidden, for the most part, from public view, away from the street, buffered primarily by whatever commercial use comes in front to the north of this. Whatever happens to the east of this, storage unit to the west of this, and then, you know, a 60-foot-plus buffer to the south of this. So it's hard to argue that the use doesn't make sense when it's adjacent to the exact same use. Or it's hard to argue that the use doesn't fit when it's adjacent to the exact same use. So while I think we all have our concerns of storage units up here, where Jack, whether it's orange or too many of them facing major thoroughfares and such, at least this one, I think, is tucked away, hidden, and going to be predominantly out of sight, other than for people who might need it. I was actually shocked to hear it was going to have 208 trips a day. I was like, really? 28 maybe? But, you know, I mean, the gas station or whatever that's going to come immediately to the north and/or northeast, I would probably consider a much more intensive negative use than what's proposed today. So I appreciate their efforts to make it look like a modern-day storage unit, office-type building use. And those are just my comments.
Other comments or questions before we move into motion phase?
Well, you know, I can make light of the fact that orange, but part of the problem back then is the cookie cutter, sterile, absolutely ugly look of them. And I think we've made a lot of improvements. And like you said, Ms. Lori, we've had some recently that, you know, have come in and they, you know, they've realized that they need to be closer to people that use them. So they've, you know, they've been coming in cosmetically where they blend better. And I think that's what this is trying to do here. You know, so I'll kind of echo, I won't repeat, but I kind of, I think that some of the points Don made merit consideration.
Any other comments or questions?
A comment that I think on the fit or the conforms to the fit in this location, I think the idea of, tagging off what Don said, if there's going to be a really, really high use on the corner, which probably commercial with its gas station, whatever, to me, it balances to put a really, really low use on the backside of it, because then what you're doing is you're averaging a lower number. You're bringing that average trips down of what it could be at its most intense development. And I think since it's next to another mini storage, I don't see, I can disagree that it's, that it fits in the area.
Other comments or questions? Okay, we'll move into the, we'll close the comment, public comment portion and move into the motion phase, and I would entertain a motion. Don't be shy.
Because I'm going to do it. I'll make a motion to deny the requested use, right? Sorry, where is it? There it is. Motion to deny the special use for a reason discussed, and maybe that we deny the special use request made by the applicant as it does not meet all the approval criteria of section 3.8.3 of the LDO.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
Just one additional comment, saying that something is in harmony or conforms to particular location because it has that same thing next to it, doesn't always work. It works with homes, right? This house is the same size as this house next to it, which is the same as the house next to this. But I don't think we'd want a plethora of drive-throughs, right? We wouldn't want three or two veterinary clinics next to each other. I'm just saying, the use matters whether or not they're in harmony. And having more than one next to it, another one, I don't think is what harmony means. It's just...
Well, I would say harmonious then, it's like, because harmony isn't, that would be more like inharmonious if they were exactly the same. Because the definition of harmony is, in music, it's not singing or playing the same note, it's playing notes that complement each other. In this case, we have an indoor storage unit that's three stories, and we have an outdoor with one story, so I see that as harmonious.
You do, do you? Okay. I would not agree.
I would not agree either.
Other comments? All in favor of the motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion fails, four to three. I would entertain another motion.
I guess you guys aren't enthusiastic.
Yeah, I mean...
I'm jumping up and down here. This is the one right here.
Boy, Jack's getting ready.
This is dangerous.
Maybe he'll change his mind by the time he reads it.
Motion, make a motion to approve the special reasons for the reasons discussed, and maybe that we approve the request for special use made by the applicant, and its request meets all the approved criteria of section 3.8.3 of the LDO. And the approval is conditioned upon the following, that the resolution and permit approved for this special use request shall be recorded with the Wake County Register deeds with the expiration of the appeal period per section 3.84E of the LDO. And this approval of the special use is conditioned on the subsequent approval of and completion of construction and coordinates with development plan 18 DP 0508. And those are the only two conditions.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion.
Yeah. Because I'm sure, like, the four people that are here tonight can probably tell, we're not excited about this one. We're really not. No disrespect to the applicant, no disrespect to the business owner, no disrespect to the landowner whatsoever, but I, should this pass, which I have a feeling it might, we're getting kind of tired of these. There's a lot of them. We understand that they meet the community needs somewhat, but we also understand that, or are concerned that there's a lot of them. And we either need to see a lot more creativity, or this might be one of the last ones that gets approved. So I'm just throwing that out there.
I didn't comment on a positive note. I thought the 65-foot buffer to the houses, and of course, it's a five-acre lot now, right? But this, even though it's, I don't know when that lot became five acres and was built, I don't know how old the house is.
It was forever ago.
Yeah. So this won't be a five-acre, whatever, single, there's houses around there in that cul-de-sac. I can foresee that there's going to be something later. And a 65-foot buffer is a gracious buffer by low use that would intend to encourage me that it would be a nice redevelopment opportunity behind it as well. So that's harmonious to me as well, that fitting next to future neighborhoods.
And I know I'm not going to change anyone's mind, but I just want to be clear that part of our job here at the table is to consider what is the best use for a piece of property, all right? And in this case, because it is a special use and it's out, and the rezoning is to basically change something that we've already decided should be general commercial and move it to industrial, I believe that in order for it to meet the Cary community plan, the plan that we already decided for this best use in this very commercial, very visited area, that this isn't the best use. And I think that it could have been better. And yes, or do I think that some of us are tainted because there's already an old 15-year, doesn't conform piece next to it? Possibly. But I just think we could have done better.
I don't know that I would, I mean, and I hear you, and I appreciate your thoughts, I really do. I just don't know that I would consider storage unit industrial. In all fairness to some of the storage units being constructed today, one can almost make the argument that they're semi-office in nature, or at least some of the higher-end ones, not maybe some of the ones that we're more familiar with. But it's, if this was a regular rezoning, and I could consider some other things that maybe I can't consider outside of a quasi, I could maybe find it inside to find some reasons to say no. But everything that I'm allowed to consider by law or before us this evening, this is one of those, as Jack likes to say, 5149s where I just swallow hard.
Hold your nose.
I'm not the biggest fan of self-storage units generally, but I'm basing my decision on what I heard tonight and the testimony that I heard tonight, which convinces me that it generally conforms to our comprehensive plan. I don't know if we're deciding on whether it is the absolute best use of this site or not, but I think it generally conforms to the plan. I think that this particular storage, self-storage, looks like a commercial building. I think it serves a commercial use. It serves the other uses in the area. And I wonder, you know, whether our definition in our LDO of storage units always coming under warehouse is really, is something maybe we need to look at in the future. Maybe there are two different kinds of storage units. You know, something we, I think maybe we should look at because this comes up frequently. But again, I'm basing my decision on what I heard tonight, and what I heard tonight convinces me that it's the right thing to do.
And I'm basing my decision on information that staff provided that says, we have 10 other ones in close proximity. You know, as we go and develop, and this is my, this is my little corner of the world, so in Lori's too, and we feel somewhat protective of it, we put in all these homes, we put in some senior housing, this phenomenal grocery store's coming. We'd like to have a community where people feel like they can walk to their different places. We'd like to have a transition that goes from the grocery store to other community uses down to the residential. It's not that the storage is horrible, it's that it precludes us from being able to achieve the vision that we set out for with the Cary community plan of having this community. And is it harmonious? I mean, it's, you can look at that problem 17 different ways, but if you're, if you have that vision for what you hope for, for your community, this falls short, and it's disappointing. And I would say at some point, if we don't want self-storage units, at some point, we have to say no, because that'll be a clearer message than us saying, yes, but we don't like it, you know? Just my opinion, and I'm regretful. I see things that happen before us in the town that I hate, and it makes me sad for our community because there are things that we could accomplish that are so much better.
And one other thing that I would also say, and I know we're kind of laying on here, but we have not seen, we do not have in the town of Cary, something that we've been described, both by this, we, it was supposed to be described as the public storage, which is now orange and on the highway. We have this B-Safe storage that was going to come in, it's no longer come. We have no indication, no visual, no example of this office-like use of storage. Everything we have is the exact opposite of that, right? So every time we get a promise of this is going to be God's gift to public storage, we end up with something that we're regretful of. And either we're going to condition it so that it is exactly what we're going to, what we want, but this is not a pedestrian-friendly, activate the corner of a destination center use. This is something you put where you don't want any traffic.
Yeah.
And you don't want people to walk to, right? That's why you can take outside walks.
Right. They're not putting it in because there's a community need, they're putting it in because it's lucrative, period. I mean, that's what it comes down to. So, you know, are we, are we giving up on the vision that we had for our community for that? And that's, that's my interpretation. But, you know, everybody has his own opinion, so we should just probably vote.
Mr. George, you had a comment?
Yeah, it's helpful. Can we put the, Lisa, can we get the criteria back up of what we're making the decision based on? I'm a little cloudy now or something.
It's up.
It's up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the, I'm on my, I'm on the private view. I was looking at the local copy, and I had it on the wrong page, so my bad. Whoops. Okay, there we go. I guess the, you know, we don't know what's going to come to the corner beside it, and if what was coming to the corner beside it was some sort of mixed use, activate the pedestrians, but if it's, if it's a gas station, then I guess you walk to the gas station when your car runs out of gas and you need to, you take, buy a gas can. I'm not sure it's not pedestrian-friendly. If you're going to walk past this place to get to another storage place, then that, that doesn't activate it for the people that just shopped at Wegmans. I'm just trying to put in perspective what we're, what you're talking about. I appreciate what you're getting at. I'm trying to picture that complying with the Imagine Cary generally, if it were to be pedestrian-friendly, what is going to make this corner fit the Imagine Cary community plan? Because, Ms. Bush, you said it doesn't fit with general commercial. Well, it's not in general commercial, it's in ORD. The general commercial is not, we're not changing it from general commercial, we're changing, this is an ORD special use.
Well, we're splitting, we're subdividing it and...
No, no, it was already, we're keeping it.
So the ORD zoning exists today, simply putting a parcel line that follows the zoning line?
Right.
Yeah. So the parcel line's been added, but the zoning has not changed, they've just changed a parcel line. The zoning is, so it was already zoned for ORD, it wasn't zoned for general commercial. If you can just give me a minute to read these again.
If you can just give me a minute to read these again.
Can Mr. Smith go while you're...
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah. I think you bring up a very good point, Ms. Lori. And I did not add a condition, one because I didn't pick it up in the conversation. And also, after hearing the description at the beginning, I felt like there was enough structure there that we will get more of the, I hate to use the word office, but, you know, the better, the better-looking than the, you know, the stuff out on 55. Is there something we can do? Like, maybe I have to talk to the attorney here, but I just want to make sure that we don't get something that we think we're getting.
So the special use is conditioned. One of the conditions is on subsequent approval of development plan, and those two are inextricably linked. So you can't build another mini storage that doesn't look like the one that was shown on the slide and is in the site plan. So the site plan and special use are linked.
I just wanted that one for the record. I wanted to hear that.
So the slate gray doors are the slate gray doors?
It's clearly indicated on the plan, charcoal gray roll-up doors.
Can you bring the drawing up?
Bring the drawing up, please.
I know. It's like the Bradford.
The signage is not approved.
Good-looking prison.
That's funny you say that, because they just built one of these office-building storage units right across from the Home Depot in Apex, kind of like you pass by, do you know what I'm talking about, Lori? As you're going over to Beaver Creek?
Yep.
When I first thought, I thought, oh, my gosh, that looks like a prison. And then I realized, like, what is that? And it's a self-storage that's meant to look like an office building.
Okay. It's a prison for your stuff.
It is.
You'll never get it out. You'll leave it there forever until somebody buys the unit.
Mr. George, you have additional comments?
Can we go back to that slide? I'm sorry.
The approval criteria?
Additional Jermaine comments. Let me see if I got. So seven is clear to me. It doesn't cause undue. If it's located near houses and they got to store their stuff, that seems appropriate. We've heard from an expert about property values. Oh, general welfare, I guess if you're... I guess number one is the one that I'm tripped up on. Generally comply. Generally comply as opposed to... I'm sorry, I'm a fence sitter. Appreciate y'all's patience.
Why we pay you the big...
That's right.
You could call the question. I don't know. We'll give him your comments.
He's thinking.
We have further discussion while Mr. George is thinking.
No pressure.
No pressure.
No pressure. I hear Ed singing the Jeopardy tune in his head over there for me.
He's not the only one singing it.
Yeah, anybody can, I think.
I mean, we kind of beat this one.
Eventually, we're going to have to move.
Call a question.
I think I'm ready.
All right. All in favor of a motion to approve this special use?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? No. All right, so we've had a motion to deny. We've had a motion to approve. And Mr. George is the one that's changed. So I'm going to offer you the opportunity to make a motion.
Oh, you mean we're starting fresh now?
Yes. We've had two motions.
Oh, gee.
You voted against it.
Oh, I'm with you now.
You voted against for it.
Okay, I'm with you. I'm with you. It was a discussion, that's why we discuss things, I guess. So then I have to make a motion. If I make a motion, then I would say for the reasons discussed, I move we deny the special use request made by the applicant as it does not meet all of the approval criteria of Section 3.8.3 of the LDO.
A second.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
And could I ask that you specify, Mr. George, I'm sorry, exactly which of the criteria...
One is the one that I think I was, mistakenly, the first time I wasn't looking at the criteria, I was looking at my, the local copy. And I wasn't considering number one. I was going over the safety and everything. So I had, so number one is the one that I believe in. When I said all, I don't believe it meets number one. Because there were things pulled out, at least three that pulled out, that complied, but I think there's enough other things that it doesn't comply with. So one's the one.
So do you need to hear from other council members? Just one is enough? Okay.
Do you want us to tell you if there's other ones?
I think there are other objections other than the generally comply objections.
We each mentioned...
You said harmony.
Yeah, we each mentioned them when we made our comments, but three.
I think it would be good if you listed your objections.
Okay.
Okay, I'll list my objections as primarily number one and number three.
Ms. Bush?
And five.
Right. Mine were with respect to the need of the general welfare being necessary and also not in harmony with the surrounding development character.
And my objection was number five. So we have a motion again to deny. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Five, two.
Aw, we have to do another one along the way.
Mr. Silverstein?
This is embarrassing.
I would ask it this time if everything's in order. And if so, I'll close this public hearing.
We still have the site, the development plan?
Oh, that's right.
If the special use permit is denied, would you still, would you go to the... If the special use permit is denied, you don't go to a development plan, do you? How could you have a development plan without a special use permit?
So we're done?
Doesn't that preclude...
We just administratively deny it?
Yeah.
Or, because we're drawn either way?
The special use permit is denied, so you can't have a development.
Correct.
Okay. So everything's in order? Okay, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. That concludes the business. On the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second and a third discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you.